Okay, good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. And we will start with a roll call from our secretary, Ms. Linda Pugh.
Regina English?
Here.
Jeannie Lira? Linda Pugh, here. Steve Seaver?
Here.
Cory Williams?
Here.
Our students, Elijah Moya will be joining. She's from the company of that one. And Anna Soto?
Here.
All righty, we have a meeting. So moving right along to 2.3, our Pledge of Allegiance and reading of the mission statement.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge skills, attitudes, and behaviors to personally succeed and contribute to the common good.
Did we already do the mission statement? Okay. So if there are any members of the public who desire to address the board on any topic related to board work, they must sign in on the roster before 6:30. So if anyone wants to do that. Okay, moving to... Three, has everyone had a chance to look at the agenda?
Yes.
Are there any changes? Or any concerns? No? Need a motion?
I move to approve the agenda as stated.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Williams, seconded by Mr. Seaver. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four, showcasing Otero Elementary. Ms. Amy Karbowski and Principal and Kessie Ginnett, Assistant.
Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Berghansel, and Mayor of the community. We are excited to showcase our school today. Happy Board of Appreciation Month as well. So thank you for all of your service and support that you've given our schools. We have compiled a video to highlight all of the great things that are happening in our school. And so we'll begin with that.
Hi, my name is Nina Metta. And this is my eighth year here at Otero Elementary. I am currently a fourth grade math teacher. In regards to this crazy year of 2020 moving into 2021, we know that it's been a while time to be a teacher. At Otero, however, I believe that we, as teachers, have had as much support as humanly possible via our administration and our coaches. There's constant checking in, morning check-ins, email check-ins to kind of see what things we are that... or what things are due from them in regards to feeling supported ourselves and in regards to supporting our students. One way that I think has been really helpful is an increased level of communication and a willingness around the administration to address those communication to the needs of our current school environment. So adjusting our weekly newsletters, things like that to the needs of all teachers. I know we've had to transition to Teams calls, things like that, which hasn't made things necessarily easy. But I think that allowing that to kind of happen and administration being flexible has made me feel supported as a teacher because I feel like I always kind of have a feel for what's going on. In regards to my own flexibility, one strategy that I can use this year is through some teamwork with Dr. Gannett and Ms. Bonai. We worked together to come up with a new plan for teaching fourth grade. As a fourth grade math teacher, I teach both virtual and in-person classes at the same time. So we took a flipped classroom approach. And so we've taken my math class and students to work on the internet website each day, preparing for the lesson. And so then that way, the next day, they're able to do it smaller with me and I'm able to more individually meet the needs of students. This is a great system that I think has come about due to the pandemic. It is a system that I would love to continue to use in years, even after the grading of the 2020-21 school year is complete. So though it may have been a trial by fire sort of year, I think that we've all had each other's back. Teachers have been supporting teachers. Parents have supported teachers. We're doing our best. So I know that we are doing our best, everything that we can here at Otero.
Hi, my name is April Ray and I'm a kindergarten teacher at Otero Elementary. The first question was, how have I felt supported through the pandemic? I absolutely have felt so supported by my administration, by my fellow teachers, especially my team, just giving ideas of how we can better reach our kids at home and supporting them in whatever way we can, academically, even emotionally. We've really all evolved together. And even though it was challenging, I really feel like every single one of our teachers has grown just as an educator and a person because of all the special circumstances that we've had to navigate. So I absolutely have felt supported by our district and by our school. And students have gone through a few of those months.
Hi, my name is Nine Colley. I'm a second grade teacher at Otero Elementary. And this year has been unlike any other. Teaching during the global pandemic has been pretty crazy, but I have definitely been supported with a lot of it. We have support staff that comes in and helps while I'm teaching in-person students as well as e-learners at the same time. There's been tons of new training, technology available. And so that has been really nice just to try to make things kind of the new normal while still being kind of not normal at all. This year, I've also shown a ton of flexibility. You would not believe how difficult it is to teach in-person learners and e-learners simultaneously. But somehow, it happens. We learned things on Canvas that have been pretty awesome. We're trying to work with ZeroPod, learning all of these new things to make it work for all those students have been working pretty well. And so we're getting through this time. Teaching during a global pandemic is happening. But whenever something new is presented to us or asked of us, I've never felt the pressure to be perfect right away. So as we've transitioned to e-learning and learning new softwares and new ways of doing things, I think there's just been a lot of understanding of like, here's this thing that we're asking of you. But we know it's new and we know it's hard and different. And that's okay, like, we're figuring it out together. And there's time. And if the first time you do it, it's a total failure. Like, there's so much understanding and grace in that. So I've just never felt the pressure to, like, figure everything out and do it perfectly right away. And that's been really refreshing. And I felt really supported in that. And then one way that I think I've shown flexibility during teaching in this time is just, I think, like, basically redesigning everyone from beginning to end. I'm just bringing the content is the same and all of the pillars of what we're looking for is the same. But the way it's being presented has been totally redesigned. So the way that we're giving the walls is different. The way that I'm designing the lines is different. The way that I'm planning for engagement is different. The way that I'm checking for understanding is different. And so I've kind of had to develop an entirely new toolbox as a teacher over time. And that's been a huge learning curve, but also an opportunity to show some flexibility.
I am important.
I am worthy.
I am powerful.
I am powerful.
I am brave.
I am brave.
I was born brave.
Brave.
My life's happening.
Perfect.
In this world, I will...
That's not true.
What if it's too hard?
Oh, that's true.
What if it's too tough?
Oh, that's true.
What if you're just too young?
That's not true.
What if you're not good enough?
That's not true.
Turn to your partner, you tell them.
I believe in you.
Go to your partner, tell yourself.
I believe in me.
I believe in you.
You do.
Believe in yourself.
I do.
Tell me why.
Because there's one thing that I believe in.
You can push through any difficulty, but your mind's clear. Let me do the first part and then you guys go from there, okay? Okay.
Panthers.
Mighty, mighty Panthers, everywhere we go. Do you want to know? So we found them. My, the Panthers, the mighty, mighty Panthers. And if no one told you today, Otero Panthers, that they love you, let me say that we all do. Have a great day.
So the theme of the game has really been stability and flexibility. And we've really been trying to offer that stability to both our staff and of our students. As you saw the pledge and then the chant at the very end, that was something that we did even during e-learning throughout, whether it be staff members or students or what have you, just to provide those consistencies and the social, emotional learning daily, just for that consistency and stability. And then flexibility is what we've been doing since we started back in March. So we continue to do it and we're all learning from it. But hopefully, everybody feels empowered to do what is best for students and families. So thank you very much for letting us share.
Well, Principal Karbowski and Assistant Principal Ginnett, it's always a pleasure to come see you guys at Otero when it was possible, of course. It was one of my favorite schools to visit. Always been a highlight for the district. Love to see the kids having fun. That chant was so inspiring. Those kids really need that right now because we're in such difficult times. And just keeping that stability and that consistency of knowing that you guys are supporting the kids, truly remarkable. Thank you, Principal Karbowski. Thank you.
Lindas?
I got a chance to sit on the mid-year review. I appreciate that as well. I saw you did a little bit of data up there for the beginning, the middle of the year stuff, going the right direction, which is what we're all about. And all that other support with making you feel involved and part of it just lends to that success. So thank you.
Thank you.
Steve?
It's always bad going last because everybody just says everything. Yeah, not a lot to add, but it was such an awful year and what a great effort. Everybody just jumping in and relearning. Everybody, you know, with their first year, fifth year, fifteenth year teachers, all new. I'd just like to thank everyone's flexibility, obviously. Leadership from the top down. Good to see you guys. It's great to be back in the room, face to face, and see the kids. Thank you.
And thank you for the time and energy that you all put into our students and that affirmation that the teacher was doing with those students. That was awesome. That really got me. So just thank you for your hard work and your diligence. That's a boy, we truly appreciate it. So thank you for coming to share with us tonight.
It's all good evening.
It is not quite 6:30 for a public comment, so we'll go back to that. So right now, we'll go to 5.2, School Board Recognition Month, and I will turn it over to Dr. Berghansel.
So January is School Board Recognition Month. And what a year to have been a school board. But we're very, very thankful you have been our school board because we wouldn't have gone through this pandemic without you. You've really been flexible. You've listened to our needs as a district. You've been there at the food drive. You've been there in the schools. And just thank you, thank you, thank you to each of you. We have a special gift for each of you that some of our schools have put together. So I'm going to let folks come up and we will deliver the gifts.
This one's for...
Regina?
Ms. English?
So Ms. English, this is from Centennial Elementary, Carmel Middle School, Monterey, and Pike's Peak. The Pike's Peak Park group.
Thank you, I like Sparkly.
Mrs. Pugh, this is from Harrison High School, Otero, Sand Creek International, and Stratamar Hills.
And then this is for Cory Williams?
All for Cory.
Okay.
I love you. Gee.
When they brought them in, like, people went a little overboard. But you know what? You deserve it. Mr. Williams, yours is from Oak Creek, Panorama, Strat Meadows, and Sierra. And you have a painting too, Mr. Williams.
My tinsel is... That's all. Oh, my goodness, I love this so much. If you guys remember, when we did the trunk or treat last year, I was the Green Lantern and they did my eyes.
That's hilarious.
Because I had the green...
Yeah.
This is so awesome. I love this. Thank you so much.
And Mr. Seaver, yours is CRA, Guyerson, Mountain Vista, and Sorrento Eagles.
Go in my office. Come on up to Gina's.
Oh, that's Ms. Liras.
And that's Ms. Liras, too, right? Can you take it and put it back in? In our office? She's not here today.
That's Gina's office. If you guys could step up front for Christine to take a picture to recognize you during this one.
Put it down, ma'am.
Actually, one of you... Why don't you first say goodbye to your gift?
Yeah, probably. Thank you, Marcus, I appreciate you.
You have to stay a little socially distanced because you want to look some good side. All right. And then, first... Now, if you guys could just keep all of you a little bit to the middle with a little space between you with all your swag and beauty.
You are good, too.
Yeah, I think it's nice. Make sure you guys are painting.
All right.
That's tinsel.
Okay, now say, "We are large."
We are.
Would you say that little chant from the...
Okay, so... Okay. So first, wow, okay. Yay. So, okay, Pike's Peak, Carmel, Centennial, Monterey, and Pike's Peak. Like, thank you, thank you, thank you so much for all these fabulous gifts that represent me and who I am.
And you don't have to share.
And I don't have to share. I have Coach, I have Sparkly. Oh, my gosh, I'm coming love right now. So if you guys are watching out there, Facebook land, thank you, thank you, thank you so much. And we can do what we do without you guys, so thank you.
I don't want to put my paintings out. Like, it's so amazing. Oh, my goodness. Sierra, Panorama, Oak Creek, Strat Meadows, thank you so much. It's truly an honor. You guys, thinking I inspire me. You guys inspire me every day. I'm here for you guys. I love it. It is amazing. I appreciate it so much. Thank you. You'll sit here for a little.
Well, and yes, Guyerson, Mountain Vista, CRA, Sorrento Eagles. So often, as a board, all you hear is the negative. And it's, you're so separated, especially now with COVID and not being able to visit schools. Sometimes the affirmation is feeling far between. And the gratitude is so overwhelming. It's awesome. Thank all the schools. You know, and you guys do so much hard work that we don't see every day. It's really difficult to have that connection. So very appreciated. Appreciate it, all of your hard work. This is awesome.
Was it Oak Creek or Otero?
Otero.
Okay. So I have Stratamar Hills, Sand Creek, Harrison, and Otero. I appreciate all this. It's, you know, this is the... We don't get a salary. And actually, the best salary we get is what we see happening with the students. It never hurts to have a lecture on the side. But more than anything is, you know, being able to see the students even if in a video. And above all, to see that they're growing and getting what they need. But thank you for your appreciation and support.
I got one more a little bit. Hold on, hold on. Because it's got names of students on the back and they deserve a shout out. So I have Diego in the second grade. It doesn't say what school. Nahara in the second grade. Exava in the fourth grade. And another Diego in the fourth grade. Thank you so much for this. I appreciate it very much.
They're all, it's made by students at Stratton Meadows.
All Stratton Meadows. Thank you, Stratton Meadows.
And just to wrap it up, our president, Jeannie, isn't here, but I'm sure she's very appreciative. And so thank you from Jeannie. And once again, as a board collectively, it's an honor for us to be able to be that voice for our students and our districts. So we just really appreciate that. All that you all do for us, just as we appreciate what you do for us. So thank you. What you do, what you all do for us, thank you. Okay, now we are going to 6.1, Student Board Rabs. They gave a report at our last meeting. Is this something we need to...
Do you think so?
Yeah.
How's school going? How are you guys feeling?
Is that a personal question or just out there?
Yeah, yeah, well, just to not pick up. We don't get to see you that often. Again, not having that group time to discuss stuff, so...
School is definitely like a full-time job, except I'm not getting paid. But it'll pay off in the end. It's okay, it'll pay off in the end. But I mean, there's just, the freshmen are just getting back, getting into the swing of things. Seniors are ready, excited, but stressed out at the same time. But everyone's slowly getting back into it.
And you're going back to all that stuff?
Yes, ma'am. First game on Monday, if you guys want to come.
Where's the game?
I don't know, I just show up and play.
Text me.
Show up at the right time.
Yeah. We went back on Tuesday and I'm just happy we're back.
Well, thank you guys for sharing. But, you know, I just want to say that this time that we're in this pandemic, like you guys collectively, and I'll just speak, let me speak for the nation of students. You guys are resilient on so many different levels to have honed in and really stayed focused at this time. So we thank you guys for that. And yeah, no matter what we do, we need to finish strong. So thank you. Going to number seven, Matters Reserved for Board Action. We have 7.1, the Revised Budget and Financial Plan. Ms. Shelley Becker.
I believe she stepped out for just a moment. There were some issues with one of the...
Okay, so it's still not quite 6:30, so I'm not sure if... We have public comment. But we'll have four more minutes for that. But while she stepped out, we'll go to eight and then we'll go back to seven once Shelley comes in. So Board Consent Agenda. We have 8.1, Approval of Minutes for December. 8.2, Operational Expectation. Three, Monitoring Report. Treatment of Stakeholders. 8.3, Operational Expectations for Indicator Report, Personnel Administration. And 8.4, the Operational Expectation to Remonitoring Report. Has everyone had a chance to view these documents?
Sorry, just to interrupt, before you approve all those, you have to go back and approve 7.4.
We could do it now or we got to seven. The policy is changed on...
04 that you're approving.
Okay, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Just 7.4, because it's a separate item. You don't need Shelley for that.
Okay, so 7.4, the Policy Change, OE4. Has everyone had a chance to review those documents?
Yes. Can I just explain for a moment what Wendy was reminding us? The, in item eight, we're going to approve indicators for policy, OE4, that we're also making a modification in the policy. The policy has to be clarified and approved by us before we accept indicators reflecting any change. And we had all this discussion in, you know, our work session about changing the policy and about the monitoring and the indicator reports coming up. So that conversation has occurred. We have to approve the policy change or we didn't accept an indicator reflecting any change.
Thank you, Linda, for giving the public that clarity. So can I have a motion?
I move to approve policy change of OE4 Personnel Administration.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Williams, seconded by Mrs. Pugh. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, 8.1 through 8.4, which I just shared with everyone. Can I have a motion?
I move to approve the Board Consent Agenda.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Pugh, seconded by Mr. Seaver. All in favor?
Aye.
Just wanted to go back to public comment. Was somebody invisibly signed the sheet? Who did it sign?
I got it. 6:29 PM. But it doesn't look like we are going to have public comment at this time. If we are, speak now or forever hold your peace. Now going back to 7.1, Mrs. Shelley Becker is back with our revised... Now going back to seven point one, Mrs. Shelley Becker is back with our revised budget and financial plan.
You can take a second, Shelley, we know you had to straighten them all away, you're good, you're good.
I just thought somebody had my glasses over here.
You left it with me. I think my mind was a little bit off.
Like it can't see.
So I apologize, sorry. Can you hear me? Great, um, welcome to the revised budget for Harrison School District for fiscal year 2021. So every year, the state allows for school districts to submit a revised budget by January thirty-first of the current fiscal year. So again, this just shows our legal requirements. So tonight, we have approval and adoption of two different resolutions representing our fiscal year 2021 revised financial plan and budget for all of our funds. Really like this slide, it gives a great synopsis or capture in totality of the fiscal funding of the school district. So as you can see there, our budget at a hundred ninety-nine million now at two hundred and one million. So again, we had some minor changes in three different funds, and that's what I'll go over real quick in the next couple of slides. Okay, we've been talking a lot about pupil count, and that definitely has been a conversation at the state level. And one thing that's coming out today, we were just talking about it over the last hour, the state is looking to whole school districts harmless for this year for pupil count. So we're hopeful that through the supplemental that the state will do, it's a budgetary process, that would be very helpful and impactful, because across the state, it's about over thirty-three thousand students, less in public education across the state. You can see here right now, just looking last year's October pupil count, just over twelve thousand, and now where we sit at not quite eleven thousand six hundred. Our per pupil revenue this year, eighty-two forty-one. That's something that each of our students, as a result of the October pupil count, that per pupil revenue that we are funded with. So I always like to throw in the general fund, just to show there are no budgetary changes to it tonight. But just because it is our major fund, and the one that most of the activities of the operations of the district are handled through. As we look at our revenues, our state, our PPR, intergovernmental revenue, that's primarily our state equalization. So we are a district that receives over eighty percent of our funding in our general fund from the state, from that per pupil revenue. And again, always like to highlight and just mention our salaries and benefits, we're in the service industry, and that is the work we do, our largest expenditure there. Okay, we have three other funds, and please, any questions along the way would be great. Our insurance reserve fund, this is where we account for our liability, property insurances, our risk fund. So what we are asking the board tonight is an increase to the expenditure appropriation by twenty-five thousand five thirty-nine, as listed there. And really, what's the largest expenditure, what accounts for that is, we're in the process of a reevaluation of all of our property and insurance, liability, and coverage, insurance coverage with the district. And part of that is with all the bond work we're doing, we're on a three-year cycle to get the appropriate value of all of our buildings on our insurances up to date. So that is the reason for the increase in expenditures. Our bond fund, this is our fund that we use solely just to pay for our debt, our principal payment and interest. And here, asking the board or presenting an increase in expenditures of thirty thousand to account that we remain within statutory authority for our total expenditures of the year. And that cost is really due to that pain agent fee for the company to help administer our funding. And then our health insurance fund. Again, coming to the board tonight, we're going to have more conversations moving forward when during our budget process, not only general fund, but really doing, and again, a deeper dive into talking about the health insurance fund. And what this says, tonight, we're asking for or presenting statutory increase in budgetary appropriation for the expenditures for the health insurance fund. And that really does, again, talk to, that'll be a whole future conversation, but the way our claims are trending, what's going on with healthcare, there are some trends in what we're, are experiencing with the health insurance program. And here's a summary of our expenditures by fund, so I guess kind of a number to put in our heads. I remember coming before you last June for the budget adoption at a hundred ninety-nine million, and I remember saying we're, we're right at two hundred million, so we, two hundred and one million. So that's really, as we think about Harrison as an organization, as an entity, as a school district, our total, if somebody were to say, hey, Hares is your school district, not by kid size, by monetary and budget, two hundred and one million. Okay, as we continue to review and monitor this year's revenues and expenditures, as we start having budget updates and conversations, going to be a super busier again due to the federal stimulus funding that continues, we're hopeful that it will continue to help school districts, just as things at a national level, I expect we'll see and hear some additional information. But that definitely has had an impact in a positive way to our financials and how we can help kids. So with that, the continuing monitoring and impact of legislative actions, and we will get into budget, we already have, I guess, started talking about budget and planning. So any questions, I know that was kind of a quick and. Short of breath on mine.
As always, Shelley, we.
But thank you.
Catch a breath, catch a breath.
I apologize, I apologize.
We always appreciate the work that you do, Shelley, we, even from sprinting across the campus to sprinting up to Denver, to do battle with our legislators and informing them of what our needs are as a district, we truly appreciate you. I can't wait until we can actually get back up at the Capitol and start talking to some of our fellow constituents about the needs of the schools, and to really hit home what we, what we need as districts and for our students. So I, again, Shelley, you know, I appreciate you, we appreciate you as a board. But just thank you, you both did a lot.
Oh, great, thank you, appreciate it.
Steve, Rhonda?
You know, you can, as a district, politically, for the constituents, grades, test scores, what happens in the schools, everyone could be, could be safe and healthy and well-fed and well-educated. And if you lose it financially, it'll be in the news every day. There's nothing more on your sleeve than, than the, than the year's budget. And to be able to have a balanced budget, not, not have, to have reserves, we're going to have some, some pretty tight times coming up, but going into it in a far better financial position, I have to say thank you, and thank you as, for constituents, there's nothing that we would hear, you know, we don't have a lot of public comment, if we, if we lost it financially, believe me, there would be a line of people over there ready to grill, that's the one area. So huge kudos to Superintendent Barhansel and to you, Ms. Becker, for the diligence that goes in, that's a full-time job for, what do you have, twelve, fourteen?
Fourteen.
Fourteen employees, it's a full-time job for fourteen employees to manage this, two hundred million dollars. You know, we just breeze over stuff, two hundred and one million, blah, blah. Like, that's unimaginable for so many people, we get used to that, but there's a lot of gravity to, to what it takes to do this. And a, and a three-minute presentation and a quick few thank yous barely scratches the surface. So again, just a very quick thank you for, for all of your work.
Well, thank you, and I look forward to more, we're going to have an exciting year ahead together. And really thankful, because you've been Superintendent Barhansel, I know my colleagues behind us as well, it does, it takes all of us throughout the district and as a team. And absolutely, we are fiscal stewards of our taxpayers and community, and very much want to, you know, continue to have that integrity, yeah, so thank you.
Thank you, Shelby.
Thank you.
So we're going to go to seven point two. I need a motion for the revised budget.
Madam Vice President English, I move that the board approve the resolution titled revised budget expenditures for the school district for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty, and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-one, in the allocations and amounts that are specifically identified in this resolution.
Second.
Thank you. Move by Mr. Williams, seconded by Mr. Seaver, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seven point three, I need a motion for the use of a portion of beginning fund balance.
Madam Vice President English, I move that the board approve the resolution titled the use of a portion of beginning fund balance as authorized by Colorado statutes regarding the need for this board to authorize the transfer and use a portion of the fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one beginning fund balance for the purpose named from each respective fund and the amounts and purposes that are specifically identified in the resolution.
Second.
Move by Mr. Williams, seconded by Mrs. Pugh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are down to nine. Thank you, Shelley. Nine point one, nine point two, January personnel comparison report, November financial report. Did I have a motion, has everyone had a chance to?
Yes, ma'am.
Anything, any changes or anything? No. Do I need a motion to?
I move to approve the superintendent consent agenda items as presented.
A second.
Move by Mr. Seaver, seconded by Mr. Williams, all in favor?
Aye.
Ten, monetary board performance, ten point one is our annual work plan. Does anyone have anything to? Add or take away from our work plan? I know we have our board retreat coming up the end of this month. We've had some changes on the agenda, but outside of that, is there anything that you all can see, that I don't, that you all have?
Just a reminder, in February, I don't see the, the dates on there, but I saw we had an email about the search for replacements to the board rep. There's, we have the timeline. It's on B-Day, is there any, oh, it's in March.
It's in there in March.
Okay. Oh, March, okay.
Yeah, we. Right, because of the, the spring break.
And there were, there were two dates presented to us.
They chose the eleventh. It'll be that, that second Thursday of February.
What date is that?
The afternoon.
Nora, you sent us an email for, to remind us, and I'm sure you'll do it for me again. Thank you.
I'm looking for it.
Thank you. We just want to keep up and keep everything in perspective, so, so those of us that can attend will certainly be there to share with our potential board representatives.
Anna as well.
And Anna.
You know, it's, it's, I think more, for the first time last year, we had, we met face to face, and we had the current board rep go class to class with us and be able to look at classmates and talk to them about it. I know that I visited quite a few classrooms with Julie, and that was far more meaningful than just having us talk to the group, so I look forward to that again. Hopefully, you being able to share your experience and elicit some interest.
So it's going to be. It'll be presenting, it'll be like an assembly.
Yeah.
And you'll be presenting to all of the students that are qualified to, to apply, so you'll be able to speak to them all at the same time.
It was ninety-three students, right?
Correct, yes.
So it'll be ninety-three students in auditorium with Anna.
Get it addressed all, all at once? And, and do, do we have a Q and A scheduled for that?
Whatever you want, whatever your agenda is. However you want it.
Whatever you guys make it to be.
I'm sure I could come up with a few questions. Anything else you all? You need to bring attention to?
Can we just confirm that you do want to hear from Atlas next month? They are on the agenda, we're trying not to have a lot of people in and out, we do not have to have them. We usually have them yearly, but with COVID and pandemic, if you guys don't need them or don't want them to come, that's fine, but we just want to confirm that you'd like to hear from them or not hear from them, or push them off to a different month.
Do we have it for the work session or for the regular working?
Work session.
It's for the work session.
Have you been, have you been in contact with them? Do they have any input on, if they would like to share or? I know that it could be more obligatory to them, and they just as soon skip it, but if there's, if there's pertinence that you feel the board.
No, they, we have been in contact with them, probably Dr. Claudio more than most, he's been helping with their COVID tracking, and we're pretty much in the same situation, bringing kids back the same way, and working together to figure out what's best for our community, so.
Yeah, I think that information would probably be the most interesting, because they're in such close proximity, and everyone's just housed in the same building, so I'm sure their numbers aren't nearly as drastic as ours, we're jumping across from one school to the next. I mean, it'd be up to a consensus if we want to hear from them or not.
I'd kind of be happy to hear their perspective, actually, and we could control to one or two people or, or one, and if they like to do a PowerPoint or something. If we could, if we could manage it within the room, I, I think I would like to, to hear.
Yeah, and it's not like they have to stay for the whole entire meeting, so they can come in and present and go home. Right.
There we go.
And we'll also get someone from the library district at that time.
No, that'll be at the board meeting.
The regular meeting, yeah. This one's a work session.
Correct.
February is, is my agenda, so maybe to you, we'll talk about if we need to shuffle people in or how we can do that. So was that, was that a yes?
That's going to be.
Yes.
Yeah.
Rhonda, we didn't hear your yes.
Not really a vote, but just as a consensus.
Right, we just needed a consensus, and she's sitting right here at her field of doubt.
You didn't hear my head talk?
I didn't hear you hear that.
Madam Vice President, I have, I have nothing else for the work plan.
Okay. Ms. Williams, you good?
Uh, yes, ma'am, I am good.
Mrs. Pugh's? All right, I think we're good on the work plan. Ten point two, do we have? Ten point two, do we have any legislative updates from Ms. Dr. Berhansel or?
I forgot, I do have something I can share, and then Shelley, I have a couple things to share, no? Um, we have been getting with our lobbyist group, we have been getting, um, previews of various bills that were put forward and giving input into whether we would support them or not, and then, um, Representative Exum had gone through, Ms. English, and, um, what does it do to our district, and so I really appreciate that we're able to give that input before the bill is even sponsored by one of our local representatives, or as they go through for the lobbyists, how do we want to present it? And so, there's a couple of bills that, um, we're looking at that would impact enrollment, um, high school. None of those will drop until March, but it's nice to just get ahead and be able to give input ahead of time. And then actually, Representative Exum was not a sponsor on the bill, given the feedback we gave him of the negative impact it would have. So it's really been appreciative that we've been proactive and part of that process.
Thank you. Because that, this, the work that we do is a collective work, it's always a collective work, so, that was a good thing, being able to have that feedback, you know, from him before he made a decision, so. He truly is one of the representatives that supports us in our district, so, we appreciate him for that. And before we move to eleven, I, I just want to take this time out to just thank you, Wendy. Thank you, Dr. Berhansel, for all the work that you do. It was so much going on at our work session that we didn't really get a chance to, at least I didn't get a chance to, thank you for the work that you do for our district. Thank you for your response to the pandemic. Thank you for being strategic in putting the right people in place to set our students up for success. And thank you for the extra incentives and things that was given to your staff over the holidays, making sure they can still eat and pay their bills, put gas in their vehicles and take care of their family. I know we don't get a chance, or maybe we don't say thank you enough to you, I know it's, uh, Board of Education Month, but I'm going to give my platform to you and just say thank you for all the work that you do. Uh, I really appreciate it, and I'm sure the board does. So if anyone else wants to chime in and say anything about that, because what you did for our, our, your, the staff and, and teachers over the holidays was phenomenal, so, thank you, I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
I'm not even gonna try to follow that.
I, I'm broken down.
Well, I would just respond with, it's an, it's an honor and a privilege, I mean, Harrison's the best district, we have the best staff. Um, the idea for the holiday came from Dr. Claudio, and so, we have people who care about our people, and that's the best district to be in, so, best kids, best staff, and they're gonna see us coming soon.
Thank you, Dr. Claudio.
Yes, ma'am.
Can, can, those that are in here, can we just, just give everybody a hand? Let's, let's all just clap ourselves on the back, you know? It, it takes a village and all of us doing the work collectively, collectively together to get things done for our students in our district, so. We're in, we're in a good place, and, you know, I tell people all the time here, since School District Two is the best district ever, so I'm constantly putting that in atmosphere, and even when I do interviews and things about other, other stuff, I always shift it to, but we have the best district ever, so, sorry Christine, but, you know, I just, it just rolls off my tongue every time. So, um, eleven, adjourned before seven fifty PM, it is six fifty-four PM, I'm sure that makes everyone happy. So if I can have a motion to adjourn the meeting, unless there's anything else that I missed or?
With no further business, I would move to adjourn the Board of Education meeting.
A second.
Moved by Mr. Seaver, seconded by Mr. Williams, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned, thank you all.